Good evening, Harrisburg.
Good evening.
I’m Alan Kennedy Schaefer, President of Harrisburg Hope, and welcome to the Harrisburg Hope City Council Debate of 2013. It’s wonderful to have so many of you here tonight, as we have on previous occasions, but tonight is the first time that you get to ask questions of the City Council candidates, all ten City Council candidates who are on the ballot this year. There are ten candidates for City Council. There are four spots that will be up for election. At this point, all of the candidates are Democratic. There are no Republicans who are on the ballot, so it is presumed that the four candidates who win in May are going to be your next members of City Council. And that’s why I’m particularly pleased that we have all of the candidates and the community here for our first debate. To introduce the candidates very briefly, we have City Council President Wanda Williams, City Council Vice President Eugenia Smith, City Councilman Kelly Summerford, and then we have seven challengers who are also running tonight. We’d like to introduce Ron Chapel. Some of you know Ron from running for District Judge. Mr. Ellis Rick Roy, who is a former Harrisburg police officer. We have Robert Rob Drum, who is running. We have Shemaine Daniels, who has been very involved in a lot of community activities, particularly on South Allison Hill, and is, I believe, the president of the NOW Chapter. We have Ben Alllett next, and Pat Stringer, who is a former City Councilwoman from 2000 to 2004, I believe.
2000 to 2004.
And Camille Arice, who, in full disclosure, I serve on the Board of Donzonte Community Arts Center with Camille. I’d like to thank the Midtown Scholar Bookstore for having us here tonight. Thank you to the staff for your hospitality and prowess in setting this up, to all of the Harrisburg Hope volunteers and officers who make this possible. Thank you. In particular, I’d like to recognize Destiny Hodges, our Vice President, who’s on the school board, and it was her birthday yesterday, so please give her a happy birthday. Also, Jennifer Young, who is our other Vice President, and she is going to be handling food tonight. We will have refreshments available for everyone following tonight’s debate. At this point, I’d like to move to questions. We’re going to have a couple of introductory questions, followed by questions from the community, and we’ll take as many as possible. We have microphones on either side. We’re going to alternate to keep it fair. We are going to keep strict time limits of one minute. And then we’ll have closing statements from the candidates at the end. So, to begin, I’d like to start by asking the incumbents who are here tonight. My first question for you is, you’ve served the last few years for our city, and we thank you for your service. I guess what I’m wondering is, what are you going to do differently that you haven’t done or have not necessarily been able to achieve in the last four years?
Can you move it over?
Just lift it.
And slide it.
Thank you for the introduction. What I foresee in the future is that we, right now, are battling the financial deficit that we have in the city of Harrisburg. I’d like to see the Harrisburg city become solvent financially. We are consistently working on ways to combat the violent crime that we have here. We’re meeting on a daily basis with other financial advisors to find out how we can do better as far as with our fee schedules, as far as with our license or permits, and also, we are addressing issues with the fire department and also with your police department. We want to see more active police force on patrol, on foot, in our neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that we are keeping people off the streets. So, we’ve been consistently working with the mayor and with other individuals to find out what we need to do as far as applying for any grants that we have on a national level. I sit on a national level, and I’ve been in conversation with some of our congressmen in the Washington Capitol. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council President Wanda Williams. Next is City Council Vice President Eugenia Smith.
Good evening. Certainly, a lot of the first three years of my job on council was definitely working with the financial difficulties that we’re having in the city. So, we spend a lot of time on working on the Act 47. As you know, some of us stood up and fought against that plan, and hopefully, we’ve laid the foundation now that we can begin to move forward with some of the things that we want to do. One of the things that I want to do is, in this community, I’m very concerned about the crime. I’d like to work more with building neighborhood association groups. That was one of the things that I wanted to do when I ran for council, and certainly, we have a blueprint with the Citizens’ Foot Patrol, and I’d like to build on that so that we can take our neighborhoods back and start monitoring our neighborhoods and making it a safe place for everyone to live.
Thank you. City Councilman Kelly Summerford.
Good afternoon. It may look weird, but I am so tight that I could not be so close. However, I’m not going to do that many things different than I did before because I feel as though that I was very supportive of those things that I feel will move the city forward. But if I had to think of one thing that I will do, I will work more or closely with the youth in the city. I want to hear their voice. I believe that they have a lot to say, and we are not listening. I will spend a little bit more time with looking at ways to build better coalitions between the city and, meaning the residents, as well as the police, and as well as any other organization that can enhance the city.
Thank you, Councilman. The next question is going to be for Mr. Roy and Mr. Chapel, given your, some similar backgrounds or at least aspirations in terms of the legal and law enforcement area. I wanted to ask, what would you do to, in the next four years, to make sure that we have a law enforcement presence in our communities, and what does that mean to you?
Well, I’ll address it first. Alan Kennedy Schaefer and staff, Hope staff, Midtown Scholar, thank you for inviting me here. First of all, I think that a lot of attention should be given to the young people in the community. I don’t go for a police state sort of a scenario. I think that there are enough strong, able-bodied individuals in these neighborhoods that could set up neighborhood patrol watches, and I think that it would sort of alienate a lot of people, especially in urban areas, to have police standing on every corner. First of all, I don’t think that we can afford that, and I don’t think that that would be practical, so I’m all for more community involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Mr. Roy.
Yes, thank you. There are four essential elements of good governing.
Can you use the mic?
Okay.
We’d ask the candidates to stay seated if possible and just move the microphone closer to you.
That’s no problem. There are four essential elements in good governing, and that’s cooperation, communication, concern, and collaboration. In the elements, you will find, when you’re speaking about crime, the police department you have here is one of the best, but it needs your assistance. The police are the people, the people are the police. When you’re talking to the chief of police, it’s not your police department, that’s the problem. It’s how it’s being deployed, how it’s being implemented, how it’s, you have to move from the traditional policing into a whole mode of police management. How do you manage the resources that you have? Community groups, every neighborhood has them. Get involved.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Moving to my left, we’re going to go, Rob Drum, following up on that, and I know you have some background in the Department of Corrections. What can Harrisburg do differently in the area of policing or safety?
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, and thank you, everybody in Harrisburg. This is wonderful to see the participation and the concern for the election this year. I believe it’s a very important one. But to answer your question, you have to realize that our police force is a reactive agent when it comes to fighting crime, and while that is a very important agent, I think we need to focus mostly on the proactive agent, which is our youth. As Mr. Summerford said, it all starts with our children. We need to promote youth-oriented programming, and oddly enough, there’s quite a bit in the city, but I don’t believe the cooperation and the coordination is there, and that is one of the things that I would push strongly for, to make sure that not only are our youth engaged, but that we aren’t duplicating services so that we can, for the future, plan out better programs and access to those programs for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. For actually, a couple of the candidates for Ms. Daniels and Mr. Arice, and I wanted to particularly ask you, what can we do to reach out to different parts of our community and to encourage the kind of cooperation that Mr. Drum was talking about? We’ll start with you. Shemaine Daniels.
Thank you, Harrisburg Hope, for hosting this event, and thank you to the residents for coming out today and showing an interest. I think there are many opportunities to engage with the community. When I moved out, when I first moved to Harrisburg, for example, there used to be community tension task forces throughout the city, and what the police department did in those days were rely on community leaders, you know, to be kind of cultural mediators between the community group and the police department so that there wasn’t automatic hostility and immediate contact between law enforcement and, you know, the youth in that particular neighborhood. And these task forces, I thought, worked really well, and they haven’t been used as much in the last few years. So, I would like to see an increased use of those opportunities because we really do need community involvement as we address crime and...
Mr. Over there. Or Destiny. Thank you. Camille Arice is the founder of Donzonte.
I also want to thank everybody for coming here tonight, it’s a very important moment in all our lives, I’m sure, and also thank Mr. Papenfuss for letting us be here. As far as the policing and the community, it’s that that’s something that is very important, that we work together with the police and the community, and the way we can do that, and one of the ways that I thought we could do that is, we have crime watch groups in all of the different communities, but they all work separately from one another, and what my vision is that we should all be, we should all be in contact and communication with each other, whether we live in the Midtown or South Allison Hill or wherever we live, we should all have some communication. Some of the ways to do that is to probably increase or develop better, you know, websites where the community can, can contact, keep each other over the web and have conversations so that we know, if I’m up in South Allison Hill, the Midtown, the Midtown people are having a problem, we need to know about it. I think we all have to work together. I think we’re a very separated community. We work in pots instead of together as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, Alllett, why don’t you go next, and I don’t know much about your background, so why don’t you help fill in folks here on that, as well as what you would do in terms of the community safety and policing?
Sure. Thanks, Alan, for having us, and thank you to Harrisburg Hope, and thanks to the community for being here, because this is indeed an important time in the history of the city as we look to move forward. A quick synopsis of my background, I’ve lived in the city for 15 years, right here in the heart of Midtown. I work at a company based in Camp Hill called JFC Medical, where I’m responsible for running a healthcare recruiting company. My background has been in the human resources field for the entire length of my career, where, for anyone not as familiar, it’s really about building people and bringing people together and making sure that your policies in place are helpful and effective. When it comes to looking at the community as a whole and public safety, I look at it in two ways. Obviously, we are in a financial dire straits, and we would love to see more cops on the street, as would I. However, you know, until we can address the financial realities of it, we have to look at how the community can be involved. It’s great because I love, I see friends of Midtown all the time, and they have their street patrols. I know there are community groups out there that are working hard to keep the streets safe, but I’d like to see more interaction, as Camille mentioned, between the community organizations within the city, as well as with the police force, and making sure that that communication can occur and is productive, and that there is a good relationship, because I think sometimes at times, there’s an antagonistic relationship, so I think we need, we have some improvement there, and that’s what I’d like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alllett. And finally, Pat Stringer, you were, you served on City Council before, and I think, given, given how that might have influenced you, what are some things you would do to improve public safety if you’re elected this year?
One of the things that I did, just as an individual, I tried to get involved in government. They had a citizens’ police academy where we learned a lot about what’s going on in the city, and we found out that youth were involved in a lot of activities that they shouldn’t have been involved in. Another thing that I did, I served on the police review board. We actually interviewed the policemen who would be put on the streets and everything. So, I find one of the best things to do is try to educate yourself as to how you can get more involved in government or in what is going on. Don’t sit back and wait for someone to come to you. You know, try to find out as much as you can.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer. At this point, my next question for the candidates, and this is for all of the candidates. As you know, Harrisburg has something of a debt crisis. There’s an incinerator with a debt load of upwards of $340 million, and Harrisburg now has the dubious distinction of having the highest debt per capita in the country. There was a ruling just a few days ago in Stockton, California, in which the bankruptcy court judge allowed Stockton to enter bankruptcy and said the creditors had not been negotiating in good faith. My question to the candidates here with us tonight, generally, the general question, of course, is how do we get Harrisburg out of debt? My specific question on this particular issue for you is, how do we, how do we move towards some kind of concessions from the creditors? This time, we’ll start in reverse order, approximately, so we’ll start with, we’ll start with Ms. Arice here and go down here, and then we’ll come back to Council President Wanda Williams.
Well, from reading up on this article in Stockton, California, and their crisis over there, they, they are implementing the bankruptcy thing that we are not doing here in Harrisburg, and it seems to me that they’re going to be able to set precedent for other municipalities such as ours to, to go in, to use that, the bankruptcy issue in settling some of the problems that we have in, in small municipalities like ours. I’m very hopeful that, and glad that this happened in Stockton, because it gives us something to go by and to follow through with, which gives us, we should follow this to see how we can use what’s going on there here in Harrisburg.
Thank you, Ms. Arice. Ms. Stringer.
I attended the meeting of Harrisburg Young Professionals, where the receiver was the guest speaker for the evening. He seemed to feel that we were getting much closer. He’s saying that no one is going to be getting everything that they want, but he feels that he’s getting the creditors to understand a little bit better. Two nights ago, Senator Teplitz had a meeting with his constituents. He’s involved in these negotiations that are going on. So, what I’m thinking or hearing is that these creditors are going to have to come to the table, they’re not going to get everything that they want, but I think everybody is going to eventually get there, and we’re going to come to a settlement here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer. Mr. Alllett.
Obviously, the short answer to your question is, yes, there’s got to be concessions from the creditors, but there’s a larger issue at stake when you look at the amount of structured debt that the city has, and the reality is, until we can address where revenue is going to come from in the future, we’re going to be spiraling in the same situation we’ve been in for, really, the last 30 years, and that’s the biggest concern that I have with the sale, with the sale or lease of any of the assets that we have. The biggest question we all need to address and answer is, where is the revenue going to come from? The stark reality in the city right now is that over 28% of our population is at or below the poverty level. There is not a tax base there. Over 60% of our property is tax-exempt. We’re not, we’re not getting revenue there either. So, we all need to be concerned and thinking, putting those thinking caps on to say, how are we going to address it going forward? Where is the money going to come from? Because the reality is, we can’t tax our population anymore. I mean, we’ve all, we all just doubled our EIT tax, and that’s, that brought pain on all of us. So, we have to come together with some viable solutions, and that’s going to take the community, that’s going to take the elected officials, it’s going to take the county and the state to come in and do that together.
Thank you, Mr. Alllett. Ms. Daniels.
I think candidate Alllett pointed out, we’re basically, at this point, judgment-proof. So, to, I think Stringer is correct in that we will probably have to get concessions, and we’ll get concessions from the creditors because we are judgment-proof. But I’m also concerned with the structural debt and our inability to fund our operating costs, and I think we need to look at how we spend our money and what value we get for how we spend that money. I am, you know, sometimes I look at our expenses, and I think, as an individual, I would never pay that amount for that kind of service. So, I really think we need to look at all of the, you know, all of the budget items on, on the table and really examine, you know, our debt side and our revenue side, because until we really look at how to make sure that our city is financially sustainable, these issues will just keep coming up.
Thank you, Attorney Daniels. Mr. Drum.
Well, that’s a big question for 60 seconds, but, well, first of all, I want to tell you that, you know, I work in the private sector, and I am not by any means a rich person. I feel the pain that everyone here feels. Sometimes it’s a struggle to pay your bills every month. Believe me, I know. This debt crisis is not the fault of the people of Harrisburg. It is the fault of attorneys, contractors, engineers, negotiations that were made. I don’t believe in good faith. I believe there definitely needs to be some investigation into that incinerator debt. I do not feel that the city should be held responsible for that debt until that investigation is complete, and this burden should not be on the backs of the Harrisburg residents and taxpayers. I’m sorry, I do not feel that way. I would not have voted to double the earned income tax rate, especially considering what negotiations have been done with the creditors. Where is the information? I want to see that, and I really can’t answer your question fully until I have that information.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. Moving to, to my right, we’re going to start with Mr. Roy.
The debt, time and time again, we’ve heard more and more about the debt. We have to work to reduce the debt. We have a receiver who is now working on it. We’re in receivership, people, whether we want to be or not, so we’re going to have to work with them. Whatever plan he comes up with, we have to, long it is, if it can be tweaked, if it can be moved, as we go through the process. Every, I’ve sat in that council chambers, and every expert that have come through there has told us, make bankruptcy your absolute last resort. Why would they tell us that? Because once you start down that path, all you have to do is look at Camden, New Jersey, Detroit, Michigan. Where’s the recovery? Where’s our recovery point at? Ruts around Rowell in two years, once we start down that bankruptcy path, it’s going to look like a town in a tombstone. There’ll be tumbleweeds rolling down there. We crossbars, come on. That’s a slippery slope.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Mr. Chapel.
I don’t think that the residents of Harrisburg, 49,000 people, okay, thank you. I don’t think that the residents of Harrisburg, 49,000 people, should be saddled with the $360 million debt. I think that it’s unconscionable to expect for these people, to expect for our fellow residents to be burdened with someone else’s mess. I think there should be a full federal investigation to find those that are responsible for getting us into this $360 million debt. You know, it seems as though it’s expected for us just to accept it, you know, but I’m not ready to accept it, you know, because the good residents of this city had no hand in that, in those processes, and they surely didn’t profit from it. You know, I said a long time ago that it seems that one of the schemes that’s being formulated now is to turn Harrisburg into a plantation, so the residents in, I can’t afford to stay, and I think that there’s a big conspiracy here, and I think that it should be investigated thoroughly by the federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Councilman Summerford.
I believe that we certainly should have an investigation. However, this panel doesn’t have that authority to do such. That is something that the, the courts have to handle. So, I have to work with what we have, and what we have in place now is a plan, and we are working the initiatives and the plan, and like Mr. Drum said, we need to know whatever the negotiations with the creditors are. But I could assure you, because I’m not able to discuss that, that they are doing the best that they can to make sure we get the best that we can. So, I am just willing, right now, to work through what we have. Bankruptcy, I didn’t vote for it before, and I would not vote for it now. However, with Act 47, if we do go into bankruptcy, I believe that we will have the best possible chance to get the best out of it, because at that point, the state will be taking us through it and not any of us.
Thank you, Mr. Summerford. Councilwoman Smith.
Certainly, I agree a lot with what Mr. Drum has said earlier, and in terms of the federal investigation, I stood with my colleagues to send a petition around, and a lot of you signed it, to ask for that federal investigation. We asked for the investigate, the audit of the Harrisburg Authority. I’m proud to say that I’m one of the ones who did not accept the Act 47 plan, and I believe, had we done so, we’d be in a lot worse shape than we are today. I believe that that’s why we’re in the possession, position, I’m sorry, to make, to have the creditors willing to give concessions, because the reality of it is, had we accepted that Act 47 plan, we would have had a fire sale on our assets, and we’d be in a lot more worse trouble than we are now. At least, we have some flexibility. We have the receiver who is now grasping that plan and is able to make some modifications to that plan, because if you all were paying attention, that Act 47 plan was not specific to Harrisburg. We weren’t allowed some of the options of the other cities that were in Act 47, and so therefore, I think we’re on the right track because you had a strong group of people standing up and saying, no, we will not accept that plan.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Councilwoman Williams.
I just want the public to be assured that I didn’t sit by idly while the receiver came into the city of Harrisburg. I was the one who advocated for that receiver to involve this council in every aspect of every negotiation, and I want you to know that this receiver... this council in every aspect of every negotiation. And I want you to know that this receiver is willing to work with us. We meet on a regular basis. You're asking where the revenue's coming from? We are assuring you that revenue is going to come into the city of Harrisburg. We are meeting, and we cannot speak about the things we are doing, but we are certainly accomplishing things. And I want to assure everybody that in the next six or seven months, we're going to be at least financially stable where we can pay all of our creditors.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Just to add, for the clarification to the community, Harrisburg Hope has invited the receiver, General Lynch, to join us to talk about how to get Harrisburg out of debt and whether there will be justice for Harrisburg. We have also invited, particularly, and reiterated, since District Attorney Marsaco officially referred the debt crisis investigation to the Attorney General's office, we have also extended invitation to Attorney General Kathleen Cain, and we would love to have any of them, Ms. Cain, Mr. Marsaco, or General Lynch, join us on this stage to talk about how to solve the debt crisis and ensure that there's some measure of justice. Finally, my last question before we open it up gets into the issue of the mayor's office, which has been in the news a lot lately as well. We would like to invite all of you to the Harrisburg Hope and Harrisburg Area Community College mayoral debate, which is going to be next Thursday, April 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Cooper Student Center at HAC, which is on their main campus. And we hope that you all can join us. In conjunction with that, I'd like to ask the panelists, our candidates for city council, what would be your relationship with the mayor, whether it is the current mayor, Mayor Linda Thompson, some of you served with Mayor Stephen Reed, and if there is a different mayor after this year's elections, how would you see the relationship between city council and the mayor? For the incumbents here, how do you feel that the relationship between the city council and the mayor's office might be improved if you're reelected? What can we do to make things better in that regard? We're going to start with Council President Wanda Williams.
First of all, I am willing to work with anyone. I think I have the personality and the initiative to make sure, my one goal is to make sure that this Harrisburg is financially stable, whether it could be any of the incumbents or whether it's any of the new players in the race. My goal is to make sure that Harrisburg continues to do and service the people of the city of Harrisburg, and we can only do that if we consistently work with the mayor. Sometimes she's not in agreement with me, and that's okay, because we're not always going to agree on everything. But the most important thing is that we respect each other, and that could be Mr. Midland, Mr. Papenfuss, Mr. Miller, our mayor Thompson. The important thing is that we're there as a legislative body to make sure that we move the laws and ordinance into place for the people of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Councilwoman Smith?
Communication is essential, and I have to be realistic with the way things started off on council. I don't feel like we had a good rapport with the mayor. I don't feel like we were having a lot of communication. I feel like that's why we're in gridlock with a lot of things. I think that the receiver has been very instrumental in encouraging us to have an open dialogue and communication, and with that, most recently, I think we've had some better opportunities to start moving things forward. But I believe that, you know, the receiver was critical in helping us to get better communication, and it's not as good as I would like it, but we're working on it, and I think we've been able to make some significant progress within the last few months.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Councilman Summerford?
Yes, I have always had a good relationship with the mayor's office. I respect the office. I will respect the office, no matter who's seated in that office. I can't say very much to what the relationship will be, other than it will always be respectful. I will always try my best to work, as I did in the past, and I'm just willing to be there for whomever is in that office. However, it is our job, we have to understand what the job of council is. Part of that job is to get along, and it sounds simplistic, or it sounds simple, but it is quite simple. Let's get along.
Thank you, Mr. Summerford. Mr. Chapel?
I have no reason to believe that we would have, other than a good working relationship. I will agree when I agree, and I will disagree when I disagree. I'm not one that believes in going along to get along. I want harmony in all situations, but I'm not going to side with anyone if I don't feel that what they're doing is the way I see it in my heart. So I'll be fair. I'll be fair. And again, I will agree when I do, and when I disagree, I will.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Mr. Roy?
When I first started, I mentioned four essential elements of good government and good politics, as you remember. Whether it's Mayor Thompson, whether it's Mayor Papenfuss, whether it's Mayor Miller, the office of the mayor should be held in high esteem, just like the office of the president, the office of the governor. I have never seen, and I've sat in that council chambers many times, I've worked in the city of Harrisburg for 35 years, 29 and was a sworn police officer. I have never seen the office of the mayor of the city more disrespected than I've seen since Mayor Linda Thompson has sat there. Now, whether she fostered that, encouraged that, I can't see that, because it's not the individual, it's the office itself, whether you agree or disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Ms. Reese?
I happen to know all of the people who are running for mayor, and I feel very strongly that I will be able to communicate with any one of them that happens to become our mayor. I am very, I'm the kind of person who likes to meet people in between, and I have great communication skills. I've worked with different kinds of people for the last 26 years here in the city, and I know there'll be problems, but we have to learn to work with each other. I would, we would have to agree to disagree and come to a happy medium. And I think that if we respect each other, respect the mayor, whoever that person happens to be, I'll be able to have a very clear communication with any of them. Because, let's face it, we're all human beings. We all want the same thing for this city, and there's a lot of things that have to happen in this city, and we have to work together and forget our dislikes and likes.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Former Councilwoman Stringer?
I served two years with Linda Thompson, had no disagreements or anything with her. I frequent this bookstore for Mr. Papenfuss. I know Mr. Miller, even Mr. Butts, you didn't mention him, but I know him, and Mr. Nevyn Midland, we, you know, working on different committees and everything, as well as any member of council. You know, it's very important, the other council people that you'll be serving with. And all the time I was on council, and even, you know, after I've been on council, I've tried to keep a good rapport with all the people that I come in contact with. So I will work together.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer. Mr. Allen?
I don't think anyone up here is going to tell you that they're not going to work with whomever isn't the mayor, because that probably would not get them elected. However, you know, the reality is this, you know, there's a balance of power in government. We have a mayor's office and we have a council. By its nature, you have to work together. And the reality is, there are going to be differences, and there are going to be difficulties that you need to discuss, and there's going to be times where you can't back down because you feel passionate about what you are fighting for. And I think that's what everybody in this audience is looking for, somebody who's going to stand up and fight for what they want and represent them in the best way that they can and be their voice in city hall. And that's really what I am looking to do as well, you know, in terms of my run for this office. You've got to stand tall, you've got to fight for what you want, and you've got to be willing to back down when you know you need to back down, but you also have to be willing to push the conversation. And I don't want to see the stonewalling that's happened in city hall over the last four, eight, 10, 12 years, because I think we're all tired of that.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Daniels?
I have the good fortune of having met all of the mayoral candidates, and I feel I could have a working relationship with all of them. What I hope everyone understands is that, you know, I am a very thoughtful, diligent, and thorough individual. So my decisions are not based on whether I like somebody or don't like them, or whether they're a good friend to me or not a good friend to me. My decisions are based on whether or not, the decision is important and will bring value to the city of Harrisburg. So I can, I have and will have a working, respectful relationship. I'm a litigator, and believe it or not, I actually have good, friendly relationships with opposing council that I've worked with in the past, and some of them have been pretty contentious, if you know some of the work I've done. So, you know, I have the ability to know the difference between what my job is as a council person and what my job is as, you know, neighbor, friend, and I hope that that distinction is recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Drum?
Boy, you love these broad questions, but you know, I understand your question...
You can be specific in your answer, it's okay.
There you go. I understand your question, but you know, the broader question really is, what is our problem with government today, and why aren't people not getting along? And I think a lot of the reason is, it's not sexy to talk about the issues themselves. It's more media-friendly to point fingers and place blame, and, you know, let's blame this person for that problem. And we need accountability and ownership. We need voices of reason. We need people that understand how to collaborate and cooperate. I do this every day at my job, working with customers that are frustrated when they call in. I know how to deal with that. I know how, you know, as a quality assurance manager, I know how to work with the employees and work with the customers and find out, you know, what's going wrong. We've got to stop pointing fingers and placing blame. We need people that are willing to work together for solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. At this point, we're going to invite the community to bring your questions to all 10 candidates for city council. The first question, if you'd come to the mic and make sure to say your name and then your question, we are limiting our questions and answers at this point to one minute.
Karen Ballivan, Midtown. First of all, I'd like to welcome Allen back and congratulate him on his successful completion of candidate officer school, officer candidate school.
Thank you.
Yesterday, President Obama said that he would give 5% of his salary to the Treasury. Under the third-class city code, we cannot increase or decrease the salary of municipal officers, including council members and the mayor during someone's term, which means if we decided to do the same thing by ordinance, we would have to pass it now before this election, and it could not take effect until 2016. My question is, would you support such a move? And those who are incumbents, would you introduce such legislation?
Thank you, Ms. Ballivan. We're going to start with Mr. Drum, and we're going to move down to give everyone a chance to answer the question. For the candidates, if you choose not to answer the question, that's okay. Just signal to me that that's the case, and we'll move to the next candidate who wishes to speak on point.
That's a very good question. In fact, one of the things I always said is, public service, as it was envisioned by our forefathers, was not to be a career, was not to be a moneymaker, and I do believe that way. I would certainly approve and vote for a salary reduction, and also, I don't need health benefits. I do work a full-time job and get those. So I would gladly give that back to the city, you know. We all got to pitch in and give a little something. I think it's the least that we could do as your representatives.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels?
I would echo this sentiment. As I mentioned before, I think we really do need to look at all of our costs and all of our revenue, and I think our benefits are part of that assessment and examination, so.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Hate to sound like a broken record, but I also agree. You know, the reality is this, you know, if you choose to run for office and get elected, you shouldn't be doing it for the job of getting a paycheck. You should be doing it because you want to give back to the community that you want to serve. So I would support such a measure.
Thank you. Ms. Stringer?
I too would support that measure, especially, I like it coming from the top, from the president. In addition, we might look at the state government to see if they would be willing to do that. But I came aboard when I think it was 15,000, and Mr. Lawson probably came, it was probably 5,000. So I would work with that 5%, and would hope that maybe there would be other people that would join in that also.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
I concur with my other colleagues here sitting today, and I think it's commendable of our president to set this example for us, to at least consider this in our city, especially since we are having such a debt crisis, and maybe if we could cut back on some of that, and like Shemane was saying, that, or was it you, Ben, that, I forget who it was, we should definitely not consider this, you know, to making money thing. We should be in this business, being city council, to work for the citizens of this city.
Thank you. Mr. Roy?
Yes, I concur. This mic, it don't work. Okay, I concur 100%. By electing me, the city saves $80,000 right away. Right away. Now, the more astute of you in here know exactly what I'm talking about. I'm already retired. I'm a retired police lieutenant from the city of Harrisburg. I'm already receiving a pension. I cannot collect a council salary. So that has to fork up. So then you ask the question, why are you running? Because it's my town. It's my city, and my city's in trouble. They need me. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Mr. Chapel?
Well, I'm going to propose a, and yes, I would go along with that plan, but I'm going to propose a youth work corps, hoping that all the churches will band together and pool money to provide summer jobs for youth. And I want to say today that when I'm elected, I'm pledging right now to donate, to contribute, if you will, $200 every month from my salary to help finance a work program to give young people in Harrisburg a chance to work.
Thank you. Mr. Summerford?
I would agree to 5%. However, I'm not saying that this particular job has to be a free job. I do many things throughout this community for nothing, and there are countless hours that we all put in. So I would go along with 5%, but I would not go along with one just foregoing the fact that council persons are being paid. I believe that the proof is in the pudding, and it goes beyond this office. What do you do outside the office should also matter. So I'm not going to accept, because I receive a small token, because none of us could live on it, that we are doing anything bad. And hopefully, that 5% I could determine where it goes.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Well, some of you may recall when many of us council members wanted to do that and couldn't do it because of the legislation, so certainly would be something we would consider. But I'd like to echo of what Mr. Summerford has said. I don't think people realize the miles that you put on your car, you know, the cost of inflation with gas. You have to be compensated in some kind of way. So I'd be willing to take a 5% cut, as Mr. Summerford said, but, you know, in this economy, I can't drive my car on air, and I am putting a lot of mileage on my vehicle and wear and tear on my vehicle, and it's a lot, it's a lot more personal time being a city council member. They call it a part-time job, but it's really a full-time job, because it never ends.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I certainly concur with Ms. Smith. As the president of council, I do more traveling than anyone, but I certainly would initiate the legislation necessary to do the 5%. I can do that myself, and I certainly would be, be willing to do that for you.
Thank you. Our next question.
Tim Dautrich, these questions can be answered with one word, two questions. One, if you were the deciding factor, the deciding factor, and the following day would be the result of it, in regards to bankruptcy, would you vote to go bankruptcy, or would you vote to continue with the plan and work out the plan where we are now? Let's say you're on council, and your vote is the one that's gonna make the decision. The other question is, if you were, same scenario, you're on council, the deciding vote, would you presently, for presently employed people at the city of Harrisburg, would you maintain the defined benefit pension plan that they presently have, or would you, would you vote to revise that to some other type of pension plan? Now, we're talking about presently employed people at the city of Harrisburg. There's two questions, basically, real quick, one-word answers would work.
Thank you, Mr. Dautrich. We're going to start with Ms. Williams.
Mr. Dautrich, for the first one, no, I would not consider bankruptcy at this point, and the reason I, that being is that I'm in negotiations with the receiver and other individual stakeholders, and it's a confidential measure, matter, that I can't reveal the information, but I know we are moving forward, and we certainly are gaining momentum in our financial stress. Now, the second one, I would like to see the city employees who are presently working their grandfather. I would like, like to revise their pension plan, but we certainly need to look at the pension plan statewide, countrywide. Pension plans are being looked at.
Thank you.
Yes, I would maintain those who are presently employed by the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
My sentiments reflect the president as well. In terms of bankruptcy, I think we're making a lot of progress in, in the, in the grounds that we took, and I think that the decisions that we've made in the past has put us in a better position that we can negotiate around that, so.
Thank you. Mr.?
My, my sentiments reflect Ms. Williams' terms of the pension.
Mr. Summerford.
At this moment, I would not vote for bankruptcy, and I certainly would not want to take something from someone who has already become accustomed to what they are receiving. So, of course, I would allow things for those individuals that are working now.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel.
I would wait on the results of the federal investigation, and also, as far as the pension plan, I must say that I'm currently unfamiliar with that pension plan.
Thank you. Thank you, we're gonna, thank you, Mr. Dautrich. We're gonna give the, give the candidates a chance to answer before, without any more explanation on that, to make sure that it's fair for everyone. Mr. Roy.
No to bankruptcy today, tomorrow, forever. I just see it as a kiss of death for Harrisburg. And yes, we would maintain the current benefits for them, but those people work for those now. They put time into it. You got 20, 30-year employees that sit here, and if you just snatch that away from them? No, we do it through attrition. As they leave, the new employees will come in on another program. As this employee leaves, the, the next employee will come in on another program.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Drum.
Kind of a broken record here. No, I, I would not pull a bait and switch as far as the retirement plan goes. I was a shop steward for the Teamsters for six years when I worked at Dauphine County Prison, and that was, believe it or not, a very tough battle that we ended up going to arbitration for, and they ended up with a tier, two-tier system. People had already worked for the county, and then people coming in new. It's not fair to take something away from somebody like Mr. Roy said, you know, that has worked for him. As far as bankruptcy goes, no, I, I would not vote for bankruptcy, and I'll tell you why. You don't, the threat of bankruptcy or the ability to file bankruptcy is a strong negotiation tactic when it comes to dealing with creditors, but you don't wanna give away all your power, put it in the hands of a federal judge, and then you have no say from that point forward what's gonna happen. So, I, no, I would not do that.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels.
On the bankruptcy question, I would answer neither yes nor no, because I have no sense of what that plan looks like, and actually, you can't put a plan together before you even petition for one. So I would like to see what those numbers look like, whether there are pros and cons, et cetera, et cetera. As far as the defined retirement pension plan, I would like to see, I don't think it's fair to take away pension benefits from employees who've been working for a long time and who have made plans for their life based on those expectations, but I do think we need to look at pensions for new staff and pensions for, you know, elected officials as well.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Boy, that bankruptcy is a hot topic to even talk about, and you know, the reality is, I feel I'm prepared to answer that based on what we don't know. I feel like there's a lot that's happening behind that curtain, and for me, as a resident of the city, I just don't know what that looks like. So I'd be hesitant to answer yes or no at this point, until we see some of what is actually going to happen. Do I fear bankruptcy may happen? I do fear that, as many of the residents, I think, here do. But until we have some more information that we're all publicly aware of, it'd be hard to answer that. In terms of the pension, I do agree with the sentiments of most on this panel, is that you just can't make a change to what people have been paying into right now. Is something gonna have to change for, in the future? Yes, it is, and that's not just the city, that's the state, that's the county, it's everywhere, it's the education system that's happening. But for the people that have it right now, I'd be hard-pressed to, to want to advocate change in that at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Stringer.
As far as the bankruptcy issue, I have not been privy to those confidential meetings, so I would not want to speak without having accurate information to go by. With regard to the defined pension plan, that seems to be like the number-one issue, because I would not take that away from city workers, and I don't think the governor should take anything away from the state workers.
Thank you. Ms. Reese.
Yes, as far as the bankruptcy, I have to agree with some of my colleagues here that we don't know enough what's going on behind the doors, and so we'd be, where, you know, it wouldn't be a good thing for us to say yea or nay on, on that issue. As far as the benefit plans for the people who are, the employees who are currently receiving this plan, they should be allowed to keep it, like Charmaine said, they've been, you know, planning their, their retirement and what they're going to do, and it would be a very, very bad thing for us to do that. I also agree, though, that we should probably look into new ways, new benefit plans for the future, to see if we could lessen our, our burden that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question.
Yes, my name is Lionel Gonzalez. I live on Fulton Street, and welcome from San Hill, where I have a special training to be sent to Vietnam. Also, I asked the VA if I could run for the city council and donate the money. They denied me, they say no, because my situation that I suffered during the terror offensive. Also, I have given scholarships to the Haraway University. When Steve Ree was the mayor, I helped him to buy more than 100,000 books. Now, I have gone volunteer crossing guard for the children also. I belong to the Midtown Food Patrol, and the community should get involved in these issues. It's not easy just to run a city. It's many other aspects. The 20th, I will be around with community action. It's not just be around the city preaching and going to the free.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you for your service. Next question.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm an advocate from the city of Harrisburg. What a pleasure being here and listening to some of the best actors and actresses that I've ever seen before. The Honorable Linda D. Thompson is not a friend of mine, I'll say, but I'll say one thing about Linda D. Thompson, she has been totally disrespected for four whole years during her administration, from some of the residents and some of the people that are on city council. I'm not gonna stand here and listen to someone saying that we're gonna, we're getting along with the mayor, when I hear things like this. I don't care who she is. She's not getting anything, anything here. So one thing about this is, remember this, and I tell the truth, we want leaders in our city, we, excuse me, I've held it because you're shaking, we want leaders in this city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyd does a lot of work on behalf of the homeless community to, to make sure that we're helping to remedy the problems of homelessness in Harrisburg. Our next question.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Dan Snowden from Bellevue Park, and my question is a very simple one. It has to do with keeping our city clean. I was wondering, what, what tools would you use to, to help ensure that the, that the city stays clean after a number of neighborhoods cleanups? And by the way, I'd like to commend, given some of you were showing up at some of those, especially one that, one that I saw recently. And, and also, would the, would the tools include, would you put up signs, would you pass legislation, make, making sure that, that happens? And if you do pass legislation, would you make it more visible so that everybody can see it, and that everybody knows what they can and cannot do? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Snowden. We're gonna start with, with Ms. Reese, and this is also an opportunity, I know many of you have been active in the, the anti-dumping and anti-littering efforts throughout our city.
Yes, I have been very involved in the revitalization steering committee with the Community Action Commission the past year and a half, and just recently, we initiated the Clean and Green Harrisburg, and we're undertaking a major anti-dumping solutions into the city. My specific effort is in educating the youth about not dumping, not throwing papers on the floor, on the ground, because we have a terrible, I mean, if you walk up and down the, the city, anywhere you go, I've been knocking on doors, and there's, there's garbage everywhere, and we have to hit the school district. In our schools, children do not get any kind of environmental-type classes until they're in 10th or 12th grade, and some municipalities start it when they're in the 4th grade. And it is, if we, if we're, if we're going to get a clean city, because the only way we're gonna stop violent crime in this city is to clean up the trash. There's trash all over the place.
Thank you. Ms. Stringer.
Before I was even on city council, I took my street, Kensington Street, and during April, which is normally like Earth Week, I had the trash picked up, not only in, on the street, but the alley behind it. So sometimes people have to take things into their own hands. You see something's going wrong, you're just gonna have to organize your groups and your neighbors and everything, but education in the schools is very important to get the people from the, you know, very beginning, because when the kids walk down the street and they put their trash, you're gonna have to learn some of that at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I have to say, it's interesting, now I've been walking door-to-door throughout the city and meeting with residents, and it's true, there's not a section of the city that's untouched by garbage being around, and I do wanna give a shout-out to those that, the community groups that are doing things on a regular basis to clean up the city, and I think it's great to be innovative, and if anyone ever follows Tara Lee Aki and her Two Minute Tuesdays, that is a great way to just be mindful of what we need to do on a regular basis. But it actually goes deeper than that, too, you know, in addition to the trash that we have, we have a lot of large items. I've been alarmed by what I see as mattresses and couches and things that we'd love to get rid of, but we have a very complicated bulk pickup process, and I think we did address that and figure out what we need to do going forward to make that a little bit easier so when we want to clean up our neighborhoods, we have an outlet to be able to do so.
Thank you. Attorney Daniels.
I would like to kind of highlight, right now, we have a lot of resident organizations that are doing the cleanups around the city. I think the city could serve in a capacity in which we facilitate and help a lot of those organizations kind of streamline and mainstream how they go about doing those pickups, because right now, each organization in each neighborhood has to figure everything out on their own from scratch, has to make the contracts on their own or whatever, and I think the city could be a facilitator and make things run smoothly for those organizations. And I also think there are some structural things, our bulk pickup policy is, creates this incentive for people to really try to get rid of the bulk items, which, once you have a mattress out there, it's really easy for the chip bags and the bottles to start mingling around that mattress. So we need to figure out those institutional, structural influences. But we also, there are also other resources besides residents volunteering. A great idea I heard recently is, you know, we do, other townships do use work release programs to do continued trash cleanup, and I would like to see Harrisburg try to reach in and benefit from some of those work release programs as well.
Thank you. Mr. Drum.
That's a great question, and something I put a lot of thought into, actually. While I think the community involvement is key and essential to maintaining a clean city, I do not believe it is the end-all, be-all answer. I think it's great, and don't get me wrong, Tara does a wonderful job with her blog, there's a lot of great community action groups, but we need to institute a, a good bulk trash pickup policy, and we need better community relations, quite honestly, between the Department of Public Works employees and the residents. I don't know about you, but I've gotten a lot of complaints from people that I've gone to door-to-door with, there were, their trash cans are being thrown down the street, broken, lids are missing, you know, it, it's gotta be a group effort between the city and the residents, and the city, I feel, does have a little bit of work to do to work with the residents. And also, as far as the, the community cleaning up, it really isn't feasible, there's no incentive for the community to work together to clean up when it costs them additional money. That's why we need a bulk trash pickup plan, but anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I think most of you realize that we have a mover and shaker on city council, Ms. Sandra Reed. She's been very vocal about trash. She's had, taken me out at designated times. We've looked at 92 places in the city of Harrisburg within the last three weeks that has a large volume of trash, mattresses such as couches. We're working closely with the Public Works Department. We've been asking them to go out and pick up this trash, and believe it or not, we have went out to 50 designated places and picked up trash, and today, there is trash again at those locations. So we're consistently doing that with the Public Works Department, and she is asking for more money and applying for grants to pick, to do big pickup, bulk pickups.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
I also applaud my colleague Sandra Reed's efforts. She's working diligently on, and she keeps talking trash, and she's not gonna stop, but one of the things, one of the things we have to realize is that a, a lot of the trash in our area is not just our, our people in our community. I got a phone call one weekend, lady told me she actually saw someone dumping in the alley over on Logan Street, and I said to her, I said, "Get the license tag," and she was afraid to go out and get the license tag. So we really do have to work, do a concerted effort. Trust me, if you get the license tag number on the vehicles that you're seeing dumping in the city, they will research them and give them citations. So it is, it's gonna take a concerted effort, there's a lot of moving parts, but I believe that Ms. Reed is laying a good foundation, and that we are really gonna make some progress in the city of Harrisburg, and I'm proud to have her on our team talking trash.
Thank you. Mr. Summerford.
I guess this is a Team Reed, not that Reed, Team Reed, a, a thing going on right now. I think she's doing a great job. I also believe that we have to start to, to work community by community and house by house, because it's really all about modifying behavior, and that's not just our behavior, but like Councilwoman Smith said, we have to know to report those individuals who are, who are doing those things. It is important that we report when somebody is doing illegal dumping. Also, I don't know what can council do, perhaps we can have a pledge, you know, that every household has to sign a pledge, that they will at least take care of their house, and at, once a month, maybe we should go around, take pictures, and say, "Someone is not following through." I don't know if it's something that we can do, but I think we need to explore the possibility that we need to help modify behavior.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel. Mr. Chappell.
I think in some ways that a lot of trash that we've seen thrown throughout the city is symptomatic of the mindset of the people that live in those communities. They are filled with despair and high unemployment, and the state is allowing the crime to carry on in certain communities, I believe, for certain reasons. But I'm all into community involvement. I think we should start promoting this area, this city. You know, after all, we live in the capital city of the whole Commonwealth, you know? This city should be a pearl. And we have to start reminding these residents that we do live in this capital city and that we do represent this city. I think that the churches can all get together. There's churches on just about every other block in this city. And they can start cleanup details in their neighborhoods. I think that would catch on.
Thank you. Mr. Roy.
Illegal dumping has been going on for as long as I can remember. Illegal dumping has been going on for as long as I can remember. We used to put out details, police officers, and I were assigned to go around, find people. And we made arrests, and we brought people in. The key is, we have to get back to that adopt-the-block. Each neighborhood takes a block. In our neighborhood, it's Ms. Peggy Dick. She's our block captain. And we meet, we see people dumping, it's reported. We need the trash trucks up here, you get them up here, you know? You have to get involved in your neighborhood. That's how you catch these guys. When you see them, they're dumping, and they're like, "How do you dump 100 tires and no one sees you?" Come on, people. That's how we do it, block by block.
Thank you. Before we go to the next question, I wanted to say, for the rest of the community questions, to speed things along so we can take more questions. For the candidates, we're going to let you volunteer if you have something particular to add to our discussion on these questions that we're getting from our community. So many people are here with so many questions, and I wish we could be here all night, because we would take every question from every resident in this city. I would also like to thank the other elected officials who are with us tonight. We have with us our city treasurer, John Campbell. Our other members of City Council, Councilwoman Sandra Reed is here with us. And City Councilman Brad Koplinsky, who is also a candidate for Lieutenant Governor. And Councilwoman Susan Brown Wilson is here as well. And Councilman Bruce Weber is here with us as well. And also, School Board Member Destiny Hodges. There may be others in the House tonight. And Carlisle Borough Councilman Tim Scott, who is also our treasurer. Thank you. And I understand that Representative, former Representative Ron Buxton is with us tonight as well. Thank you for coming out to talk with the community. Our next question for the 10 candidates for City Council.
Hi, my name is Alexis Lockman. I'm a student and resident. I have a two-part question. First of all, we know the major issues concerning the budget and so forth going on with Harrisburg right now. What would you say is the most serious issue that we have not yet spoken of, in your opinion? Also, we look to our leaders and our councilmembers as strong figures in our society, and in my opinion, strength is, or weakness is strength. So what is your personal greatest challenge going forth into this term, and how do you plan on overcoming it?
Thank you. Candidate who would like to start on this one?
I will. I think that the... Hi, thank you for your questions. I think the most important issue that we probably haven't discussed yet, I don't think that we have, is the crime in this community. I think that's the number-one thing on the chart right there. And I think that along with the trash, as I spoke a moment ago about the trash being symptomatic, I think that the crime also has something to do with the societal ways we treat ex-offenders, you know? A lot of these guys, a lot of people that have gone out and made mistakes in life, once they've paid the so-called debt to society, they're still seemingly punished forever. And so it leaves them with a sense of hopelessness. And also, it causes a lot of them to have to resort back to what they were doing in the first place. So I think that if we can take some steps to remove some of the barriers of some of these people that have paid their debt, and allow them to be free citizens again, and give them an opportunity to get a job, I think that that would help fight the crime situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell. Other, any other candidates who'd like to speak on this question?
Yes, speaking as a property owner who is attached to several abandoned buildings, I think we need to talk and look at how to get vacant properties occupied. Because if you notice, the carpets, the mattresses tend to be in the yards of vacant property. So that's one of my personal pet peeves. I also think landlords who are not maintaining their property are a problem. And I think a huge, another problem that I would like to see this city address, I'm not sure how we would do it, but we don't have that much for youth, you know, people between 13 to, you know, early 20s to do in the city. And I would like to see more opportunities for that group of people to use their energy in productive ways.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Ms. Stringer.
I'll be attending a meeting tomorrow, the Capital Region Ex-Offenders Coalition. And we're working in trying to get people re-acclimated into their communities. Most of the time, it's, you need a job and you need a roof over your head, and we're working in those two areas. The most serious issue, I agree with Ron Chappell, that crime. Crime is the big issue here. You're not going to have businesses wanting to come here or people wanting to come here and make this their home. So we have to get the crime situation under control. So that would be a priority issue.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer.
I think, I think one of the things we need to look into is new revenues. How are we going to bring new revenues into the city? And some of the things that we might want to look at is, in lieu of taxes from the Commonwealth and nonprofits, that we need to look at them donating some sort of money to pay for the, to pay for the police protection and fire protection. We also should consider increasing fees on landlords to level sufficient to pay for enforcement of housing codes. We also need to look into new grant opportunities that are out there and other non-tax resource revenues, because there are, there are grants that we can get to help our city grow. I also feel that we need to implement a website, especially for codes enforcement. If we have a problem in my community, in our community, we have to fill out an archaic piece of paper.
Thank you.
And it takes forever to get a response. So I think those are mine. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. We'll hear from one more, and then we're going to go to the next question. Then we'll hear from the candidates we haven't heard from on this question.
Well, I think one thing that I would definitely push for is a system of accountability and ownership within the city. One of the things in quality assurance that you find out is, your most loyal customer is one who had a problem, but it's resolved quickly, efficiently, and that's how you build loyalty. And, you know, we really need to build loyalty in this city. If we had a system where residents could report a problem, got a response, the issue was tracked, it was made sure that it was sent to the right department, and there was some form of expectation as to when that issue was resolved, we would see residents applaud efforts. Even though we had a problem, they see that we're working away from it. And as far as, to answer your second question, in May, I had surgery for compressed spinal cord. I had two discs taken out of my neck, and the whole left side of my body, basically, I couldn't even lift my left arm. And, you know, through lots of physical therapy, I'm almost at 100%. I want to tell you, that was a weakness, but it was a strength. It was a huge strength builder for me.
Thank you. Our next question.
Hi there, I'm Ava Hipso. About two weeks ago, Budget Secretary Zogby was on a PCN call-in. And I called in and told him how I feel. I believe in the three Rs, the revenue, remedy, is reefer. We should be growing it in the steel mills. Great, great. We should be growing it in the steel mills, creating hundreds of jobs, bringing in millions of dollars. I asked him, is Governor Corbett getting rid of the liquor because Senator Dale Leach put in a bill, number 528, to legalize marijuana and sell it in the state stores? And I asked, is Corbett doing that so that when the bill is passed, he's ready? But he said, no. But my question to him was, what do you see down the road as income? And he answered shale. To me, again, I have information in California, if they would have just taxed it, there would have been $1,400 million. If you tell people we could pave every street, pay...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to my friend Ava Burke, who has perfect attendance at all Harrisburg Hope events. On this, we're only, we're going to start with, we're going to go with any candidate who didn't speak in answer to the previous question. If you want to sit out on this one, we can wait and hear another question.
I would be remiss to say that one of my biggest issues in the city is crime. But I do want to say that we are continuing to do what we can with the resources that we have. For example, we, the council here did approve a community liaison policing position, which is one that was taken out of the budget a few years ago, and we put it back in because we realized the need for that. Also, the part of new revenue, that's a serious concern of mine, because, as you know, our legislators didn't give Harrisburg the same options that they gave other municipalities in terms of generating additional and new revenues. So that would be a concern of mine. And I think one of the things we can do is look at bringing more small businesses back into the community and employing our people, even if it's some of the ex-offenders that, you know, can generate their own businesses. We need to do what we can to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Roy.
Personal challenges. It's a microphone. Yes. Personal challenges would be, you know, it's kind of like staying in the lane on council. I don't like procrastination. And you're discussing things, and things going back and forth, and things need to be done. And you're on one committee, and you're looking at another committee, and I'm saying, "Look, it don't take a week to cross the street there, Ace." You know, can you get this, well, you know, you got to control that. You got to be respectful of your fellow councilperson. You know what I mean? What hasn't been discussed is the blight. There's a blight in the city. You know, nobody hardly touched that tonight. And I got a blight program. My colleagues go along with it. Once I'm sitting on that council, we ain't going to give them 20, 25 notices anymore. We run it past the law bureau, you get three notices there, spurt. Okay? You don't do it in 20 days, we tear the house down, we send you a bill. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Mr. Allen.
You talk a lot about what we haven't talked about, and we've talked about crime, we've talked about trash, we've talked about a lot of the issues. You know, one of the things that we have not talked about is the inability for the city to carry out basic city processes. And I think that's something that's really, really important for us as we look forward. Everyone has heard a lot about the audits and how they haven't been completed and the delay in getting them done. You know, that's a travesty for us all, because that inhibits us from being able to actually go after programs that might address some of the things that we've talked about. And we have to get these basic city processes done in order for us to be able to move forward to address trash, to address crime, to address things. So we are working from a situation of strength, as opposed to always working from behind the eight ball. And that's what I feel like we're doing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We'll take, we only have time for a couple more questions, and be assured, those who didn't have a chance to answer yet, you'll be the first to answer. Next question.
Addison Talia Farah up in Riverside. We've talked a lot about blight, we've talked a lot about trash and crime. We haven't talked about, and knowing that they're two autonomous groups, the education system in Harrisburg. It is causing a lot of the crime. It is causing a lot of the trash, because the kids are not being educated. What can City Council do to partner with the school board to try to overcome joint problems that this city is facing?
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Very good question, sir. And I'm glad you asked that, because most of the residents here don't know that we have Ms. Reed again, as our trash talker, who has met with officials from the Harrisburg School District. And one of the things that she wants to do is to find out how we can educate our youth and bring in programs and bring in speakers to educate our children about trash, about, you know, keeping their homes clean, walking down the street and not throwing things on the ground, but utilizing our trash receptibles. So that is something that we are looking at. As a matter of fact, there's legislation that's pending in City Council Committee that we will be addressing the needs of educating people with, you know, who don't know about, you know, keeping trash and using receptibles and using bags to trash their, put their trash in.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Summerford, if you wanted to add on either the previous question or on the issue of education, Mr. Summerford has a background in both education and bringing the arts to Harrisburg.
In answer to the previous question, one of the things we did not bring up, although we announced that it exists, was homeless. And today, I happened to meet a 20-year-old that moved into Harrisburg, and he is now homeless. What we can do is work at some kind of transitional thing for the homeless, particularly, this young man had two years of college. He, I said, "We could put you back on a bus and send you where you were," but I don't know if I'm sending him to hell or not. So we have to be careful on how we treat the homeless. The other thing is diversifying the kinds of activities that we have for young people. When I grew up, we had a bowling alley here. We had theaters here. And I believe that we need to increase those kinds of things downtown. I believe we have enough restaurants at this moment, and we should move them to another area. But a bowling alley, those positive, healthy things that children can grow. We want to modify healthy behavior.
Thank you, Mr. Summerford. We'll take the next question.
Yes, hello, my name is Eric Sims. I represent the Allison Hill District. And first, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chappell, because I am an ex-offender who came to the city of Harrisburg wanting to open a restaurant. Lo and behold, I was denied. But Camp Hill accepted me. Now, I've been here for seven years, and I believe in the three E's: education, empowerment, and employment. Now, if we have a Congress or a council member up here who's willing to talk to me, because I got about 1,000 young people who want to work. I got about 1,000 of them that's willing to pick up the trash or complaining about it. Hire them instead of incarcerating them. And I guarantee you, this city will change, and you're talking to a man who's been free for over 17 years. So I know it's capable when we, as a people, get together, because I'm American and not Americant. We understand each other? So my question is this. I heard a lot about more police involvement. What are we going to do to empower our young people? And I'm not talking about 13 and 21, because young don't stop that when you're 40.
Thank you.
All right? So I need some answers tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are looking at legislation that we can pass to help the youth in our community. At this point, we need, we finally got a grant writer, so we're looking at ways that, you know, educationally, that we can bring money into the city of Harrisburg, that we can hire these youth, that they don't have to just go out there and pick up the trash for nothing. We want to give them an incentive as to far as keeping their city clean, as well as being given a salary or a little stipend for doing that. So we are looking at ways that we can empower the youth here in Harrisburg.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I stated earlier that I believe that in this community, when I grew up in this community, there were many small businesses in my neighborhood. I'd like to see that a resurrection of small businesses come back in the community. I believe that Harrisburg has a wonderful opportunity to foster small businesses, employ the young people, and even ex-offenders can develop their own business plans and open up a business. I believe that we need to be, have a greater eye on the businesses that are currently going on in the city. I don't think that we recognize the value of what we have in Harrisburg. I go into the small businesses down here in this community, and I am so amazed at what I see in the shops, and a lot of the shop owners know me here. And I believe we can have more of that in the city of Harrisburg, and I believe that we need to promote that more in our city.
The gentleman was absolutely right, and I will be a councilperson who would try to break down whatever the stumbling blocks, whatever the laws, whatever the rules that says that an ex-offender cannot or cannot or should not have the opportunity to open up a business. But we're going to have to start with breaking down those policies, breaking down those rules, breaking down those archaic things that says that this person is not worthy to do the things that we know that many of them can do. So I will be that councilperson if you will be willing to be, work on my side.
Thank you.
I think that what society has to first realize is that these are not statistics, these are people. These are people, and they should be treated like people. You know, this society is one that goes to church, their mosque, their synagogue, every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, get down on their knees and ask their god to forgive them for every wicked and foul thing they've done preceding seven days, but they cannot forgive someone for a mistake that they made eight, nine, or 10 years ago. And I think that's a shame. Well, I want to tell you, Mr. Seaman, I believe, our church, Second Baptist Church, Wade J. Browley, senior's the pastor, right now, right now, we're working with different companies. I'm a trustee at their church. We're working with different companies that are giving ex-offenders a chance at employment.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Ms. Roy, if you'd like to add, and then we'll take our next question.
Yes. We have friends, we have family members who have been inmates, incarcerated, and come out. What they skills, they didn't learn, they had skills when they went in. Inside those prison walls, I talked to a couple brothers who are bricklayers. You got guys who are drywall hangers. You get guys in there that can build you a house if the material is saying. They must have the opportunity to show what they can. They're never given that opportunity, just like the young man said. They revert because he going eat. His family's going to eat. So let's give him a chance.
Thank you.
Robert Schaefer. It's been mentioned that much of the city property is tax exempt, that the tax base is very low, there's not a lot of retail in the city that can provide much of a tax base. My question is about regionalization. Many cities are in the same or a similar boat. What kind of services does the city provide now that could or should be provided on a more regional basis, that would draw on a wider tax base? What would be the pros and the cons of moving towards a more regional system rather than the city-based system that we have?
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Regionalization, Mr. Drum.
Why, the good news is, I think we're already doing that to some degree with our police department. Our mayor did solicit, and we are receiving support from other departments. And I think that that's the type of regionalization we definitely should look to expand, also with our fire service, definitely our trash service. And if I understand correctly, that's another thing that we're looking to do, is to see if there's a way that we can outsource and provide better services for the same or even less money. So I would have to say that in answer to your question, you know, I think the city already is making great strides in doing that. I certainly would support doing more and investigating as many possibilities as we can to consolidate. And, you know, whenever you consolidate, you're obviously providing, it's going to be more efficient. So I would definitely be in support of that.
Thank you.
Same here. I would also look to see, you know, the pros and cons of regionalizing, especially if it develops efficiencies in how we deliver services. There are always, of course, pros and cons. You know, if you, the way you deliver service in one area may not be the same way you deliver it in another area. So who the provider is may matter in their ability to provide that service. But like I said earlier, for me, it really is about looking at what we're getting for what we're paying. And so that answers the question.
Thank you.
I do think regionalization is important to really look at, but you have to really address what perception is right now of Harrisburg and the community around. You know, I've watched the news too. You know, we hear a lot of talk about how bad Harrisburg is and the surrounding communities. The question is, do they want to work with us as it stands right now? Have we been good neighbors? And I'd like to say we've been good neighbors as residents, but as city officials, have we made inroads with our neighboring communities? I don't know that we have. So I'd like to say, yes, let's make a case for regionalization. But we've got to do more to show that we are ready and willing to do so, and perhaps not, you know, angering some of our neighbors to the northwest of here on a regular basis.
Thank you. Ms. Stringer.
I would like to see perhaps some sort of study done where we can, maybe it has to do with the bulk purchasing. I know that up at State College, the police department and the university, they purchase their cars together, and then they paint them, you know, for each particular thing. So I'd like to look at if there's any savings that we could go in, maybe it's with the school district, or maybe something that we could do bulk purchasing, because I think they did the same thing down in Delaware. And there may be some savings there. We probably need some sort of public awareness campaign to be started that, you know, we take pride in our city and everything. I don't know if it's coming up with some new branding or something like that, but I think if we pick up the spirits of the people and everything, that we can move on and do a lot of things ourselves.
Thank you. Ms. Reese.
I'm all for regionalization. I think we have too many little communities all spread out. They're all Harrisburg, PA, but they're all working on their own. They have their own retirement benefits, they have their own trash. If we can consolidate all of what we do with these other little municipalities around, we can probably save a lot of money. So that's one of the things that we really need to look into, is the regionalization. How can we work with the other communities to help the city and them save money? Because they're also losing money like we are. So anyway, I've always been for regionalization. In fact, somebody once told me that Pennsylvania, in other states, colleges or schools are saying that Pennsylvania is how not to act, having all these municipalities, because it just doesn't work. And it's not working anymore. We need to do something about it.
Thank you. We're going to have to move to closing statements, but we are, I do want to take the, while you're thinking about your closing statements, take the questions. School Board Member Brendan Murray, I want to hear the questions of those who've been standing here for so long and hopefully will continue this dialogue moving forward for those of you who attend our mayoral debate next week. And we also want to thank the mayoral candidates who are here with us tonight. Louis Butts, Nevin Minland, Eric Pavinfus are here with us. And we also hope that Mayor Linda Thompson and Controller Dan Miller will join us next Thursday. So we want to hear your questions, and then we'll move to closing statements.
My name is Marcia. I wanted to tell you a short story. I have a 24-year-old grandson, and I thought it was about time he learned to bake an Easter ham. So I told him where you could pick it up, at Conns, after I picked it up, and score it, and put honey on it after two or three hours, bring it down to his mother's two blocks away. And I told him, maybe it's C, and he did X, Y, and Z. He said, I forgot to cover it. I forgot that you brought me the honey. If this is what pot does to you, because I'm sure he has smoked a little and has a little short-term memory, I'm against it. And the other thing I'm against is having any candidate elected that calls a whole county by two syllables, and she says she wants to put it behind her. But I live in Marysville, it's a really, really clean town.
Thank you.
My question actually is for the board that is there now. We have an opportunity with the Keystone Opportunity Zones to possibly get to sell some of our schools and to have them adapted into this plan. And I want to know if, you know, if we could have your support in the short term and then other candidates in the long term, so that we, as a district, can move forward out of the debt that we have and move on to actually educating our youth instead of actually always worrying about the deficit every year. I know that most of the situation is based off of the mayor's situation, but I'm sure that if it is based off of the city council, we really would love your support as district member, district board members. And, you know, I just wanted to hear what you possibly think about those opportunities for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Phyllis Bennett.
Good evening. I don't have a question, but I do have three comments. Number one, when it comes to the incinerator, you need to look at John Payne, State Representative John Payne, because he's the architect of the incinerator gate. Number two, when you talk about Stockton in terms of it being bankrupt, it's a much larger municipality than Harrisburg. And number three, the proliferation of guns in our community, we need to look at the laws that will incarcerate those individuals that are straw purchasers and that are putting guns into the community for these young people to have to go around shooting one another. And that's something that I would hope that you would be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to thank all of the candidates who are about to do their closing statements. Please give all 10 city council candidates a huge round of applause. It takes, it takes real courage to sit up here and to take questions. They didn't know the questions in advance, but we're civil, and we're going to move forward as a city and as a community. And that's why we're giving all of our candidates, if you can hold up your Harrisburg Hope Civility And so we're going to, in reverse order, we're going to do our closing statements. We're going to start with Camila Reese.
Well, my name is Camila Reese, obviously you know that. I have been living in this area for about almost 30 years now, and I am mostly known for the development and implementation of the Danzanti Community School of the Arts. When I first came to this city, there were no arts programs for children, the Whittaker Center did not exist, and all of these other arts organizations. I created that organization from the ground up, including raising over $300,000, and convincing the powers-to-be in the state, city, and local government, private entities, banks, you name it, that I needed that money and that this project was very important. I'm a grant writer, I'm a great facilitator, I love this city, I own my own home, and I work, I deal with the trash problem every day. And education is one of my, one of my big things. In fact, I am currently in the process of developing a proposal with the Community Action Commission to hire a theater artist. We're getting a grant to hire a theater artist that's going to go into the schools and teach the kids. And the kids are going to teach each other. We're going to do it with middle school children. So this is a big effort to try to start educating our children from the day, you know, from fourth, fifth grade, whatever it is. And we've got an artist that is willing to work with us. And just stay tuned, this is going to be one of the biggest things to help trash.
Camila Reese, city council candidate.
Hello, Harrisburg. I'm Pat Stringer, who served on city council from 2000 to 2004. A lot of you maybe remember, I was the only no vote when it came to voting for that $125 million bond that has now grown to $430 million. I'm asking for your vote on May 21st so that I can continue to work. I've been in this community for 40 years, I've become active in numerous organizations, and I'm willing to work. And I do have the time to do this. So please, on May 21st, remember people who work, who make the right decisions for you. Thank you very much.
Pat Stringer, city council candidate. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Ben Allen, and I'm sure tonight might be the first time many of you are seeing my face, but hopefully it's not the last. The reality is that I am here, I've been here for 15 years, I'm building my life here with my husband Stuart. This is where we love to be, this is the community that we love, and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and work hard for the citizens of Harrisburg. A side note, I have no soapbox to get on, no axe to grind, nothing other than wanting to work hard for the community and work hard for all of you. The question you have to ask yourself is, are you happy with how things are going in the city right now, or do you want change? And here I am, representing what change can be for the city of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Ben Allen, city council candidate. Thank you.
Once again, thank you to Harrisburg Hope for hosting this, and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to you, if you don't already know me. I am here to ask you to support me on May 21st. I'm number two on the ballot. And one of the things I want people to remember are the reasons why we are in Harrisburg. I have been living in my home for seven years. I love my home. I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. We are the only reason my neighborhood, you know, doesn't succumb to a lot of the blight. I have a lot of vacant properties, but as neighbors, we take care of each other. And I want everyone to remember that there's a lot of great things happening in Harrisburg. People are often surprised when they come in from New York or DC, and I show them around how beautiful Harrisburg is. And while we deal with the financial crisis, and while we deal with blight, and all of these issues that will take long-term commitments, I want everyone to remember that this is a great place to be, and I need your help in keep making it a better place to be, and I hope you will choose me to lead the fight to make it a better place to be. Thank you.
Shanayne Daniels, city council candidate. Thank you.
Well, I've lived in Harrisburg for 23 years, and I have to tell you, this campaign has been a wonderful experience. I've gone door to door. I live up on Allison Hill, so very diverse area. You know, you have all races, cultures, religions. People invited me into their homes, we sat at their kitchen tables and talked about the issues. We have great people in this city, we really do. You know, we have a bad reputation, but it's not deserved. And that bad reputation is not the fault of the people of Harrisburg. We need elected leaders who can lead by example, who will inspire us to come together and work together as a community, and will listen to the people that they represent. That's a skill that leaders very often forget, and is probably the most important skill, is the ability to listen. I ask for your support, and if elected, I promise to do everything I can to justly and fairly represent the people of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Robert Drum, city council candidate. Thank you. Mr. Roy.
I've seen a lot of changes in the city of Harrisburg. I have LSR Roy Jr., my name is Rick, as appears on the ballot, will be LSR Rick Roy. I've seen many changes here. I was born and raised here.
I was born and raised here, I was educated here, higher education's been here. I have 61 years old. I've seen the good Harrisburg, and I've seen the bad Harrisburg, and I know what Harrisburg can be. I am her native son. I love this city, and I spent my time in city service, service to the citizens of Harrisburg. It is all about the people. I have more time in city government than all seven members that are sitting on this council right now. I was there when Mayor Steven Reed got there, so I can trump his 28 years. And definitely had more time than Mayor Thompson. But it's all been spent in public service, service to you. So being elected to council is a continuation of that service.
Thank you. LSR Rick Roy, City Council Candidate, thank you.
First, I want to thank you, Alan Kennedy Schaefer, and the staff of Focus Hope Again and Midtown Scholar staff, and I want to let you all know that Alan Kennedy Schaefer was just commissioned as a lieutenant in the Army National Guard.
Thank you.
I love the city. I'm not from here, I've been here close to two decades, but ever since I've been here, I think that a lot of you know that I've been involved in the problems and the situations, trying to find solutions for the problems that we have in this city. And I want to continue to be so as your city councilman, so I can have direct input into the decisions that are made that affect all of us. You know, I'm not new to speaking out about things that affect us, you know? I've been doing that for years here. You know, what comes to mind is a story in a holy book. It was a man named Joe who, at the last minute, had a lot of decisions, had a whole lot of input that he wanted to have acknowledged. And I believe a paraphrasing God said to him, "Well, where were you when I created this world?" So I'm saying to a lot of folks that are coming up all of a sudden with solutions, "Where were you when?" We had problems hitting this city over the past four or five years, and now we just know about you.
Thank you.
I'm Ron Chappell, number three.
Ron Chappell, City Council Candidate, thank you.
My name is Kelly Summerford. I'm at position number eight on the ballot. I am an incumbent council person. I was chair of Public Works for two years and currently serve as Chair of Building and Housing. I am seeking a second term because I believe Harrisburg is about to experience its best days yet, and I want to be a part of helping it bring that about. I was born in Harrisburg, lived first on Rowley Street, then Holly Street, and today I live in the 1900 block of Market Street. I remember Harrisburg when it was diverse, friendly, and a prosperous city, and can, and it could be that way again, from the talented and cooperation of the wonderful people we have gathered here today. We need to take a long and serious look at our youth and treat them like the resources that they are. They need our help to help them out of trouble, and we need their help to learn some valuable skills that they have. And in return, they'll take care of us. To get Harrisburg to a good place again, we need to deal with, of course, the incinerator as well as the Act 47 initiatives. We need to look at our pension situation, and we need to promote the legitimate history that we have in this great city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I'm number eight on the ballot. I'm asking for your help on May 21st.
Kelly Summerford, City Council Candidate, thank you.
Citizens of Harrisburg, you need strong leadership. You need someone who has a backbone. I have constantly pushed back against people and entities trying to take advantage of our city and its people. During my entire term, I've stood strong with my colleagues to make sure that Wall Street bankers and insurers didn't own Harrisburg, but the people of Harrisburg kept the ownership. I've helped stop the Act 47 plan that was not good for our people and would have left us in debt. The Act 47 plan was a cookie-cutter plan and would not have solved our debt problem. I stood strong with my colleagues to challenge the legislators and the governor to do what was best for the residents of Harrisburg. The Act 47 plan would have left us at least $27 million in stranded debt by their account and would have been at least $50 million because of the ruling of the CIT case. Those who created the plan didn't even include all of the revenue generators in it, changed the rules in the middle of the process, and did not allow Harrisburg the same options they allowed other cities in the Act 47. We stood up for the people of this city, and we need fighters in those that made the plan. I have supported smart spending plans for our city that promote.
Thank you.
That wasn't mine. You let her finish. Go ahead.
Final word. Final word from your.
Yes, I do have some final words, and I will say this. I've lived in all parts of Harrisburg, and I've lived in South Harrisburg for the last 27 years. I see all of you people in the grocery stores, in the community, and I would like to have your vote and support on May 21st. I'm number seven on the ballot, and I will always, you will always know where you stand with me.
Virginia Smith, City Council Candidate, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I originally started my career at the Harrisburg School District when I felt that they were ripping the district off with the numerous bond deals they were making, and I knew that someone had to be the advocate for the children. I then considered going on to city council and to be an advocate for the residents of the city of Harrisburg, which I am doing at this point. We have those who came in to make those deals, and the bond deals, who padded their pockets, and now 10 years later, they're walking away, and they're coming back to try to reap the benefits again. Well, I won't stand for it, and I'm going to be there advocating, make sure that those are going to be held accountable who were involved in those deals. Also, here I am as the president of the city council, a year and a half later, I have a more cooperative and professional council. We don't have inner fighting. We're able to get things done, and we accomplish a lot. So I'm asking for your vote on May 21st. I'm number nine on the ballot. I want to continue the work, the good work that we've done, and I want your support, please. Thank you.
Mona Williams, City Council Candidate, thank you. On behalf of Harrisburg Hope, we'd like to thank our standing-room-only community that showed up tonight. We love to have hundreds of you here, and it's wonderful to be at the Midtown Scholar Bookstore. Thank you to the bookstore and your hard-working staff. Thank you to all of the volunteers.